Our next speaker, please, Speaker 29, Katie Osgood.
Hello, my name is Katie Osgood and I'm a teacher at a psychiatric hospital here in Chicago. I'm here today as a concerned citizen and an educator. In my hospital, we are seeing a disturbing pattern among patients from the Noble Street Charter School network of schools. We've seen an alarming number of students being admitted to our hospital with depression, severe anxiety, and increasingly with actual suicide attempts. All of these are directly tied to these schools' discipline, academic, and retention policies. Over and over, we're hearing the same stories from kids. Stories of constant stress from overly strict discipline, exhaustion from unreasonable workloads, and the very real fear of repeating a school year regardless of academic progress or IEP status. These students report cultures of shaming and humiliation. They speak of feeling beaten down from constant punishment over the most minor infractions such as not coming to school with a belt on or not looking a teacher in the eye. Kids who struggle academically or have disabilities are especially vulnerable, but these schools refuse to change to meet their unique needs. Students come to us hopeless and in despair because they feel like they have no choice but to wake up and endure more long hours of the severity of Noble Street, and some are turning to suicide as a way out. When I speak to the school social workers at Noble, they admit that especially among freshmen, that they see high rates of depression and anxiety. These schools know that they are causing dangerous mental health disorders. Noble Street may get attention for their higher test scores, but their secret sauce has a dark underbelly of push-out, of shaming, and abuse. As struggling students and students with disabilities are shed, the scores may go up, but countless young people are damaged-
Ms. Osgood, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Countless young people are damaged as a result, and far too many are ending up in a psych ward. And I want to speak to all current Noble Street students, I want you to know that you're not alone if you're experiencing these feelings of extreme sadness, stress, or fear. And to the board, I'm asking you for full independent investigation into what's going on at these schools. We keep getting them at our hospital, and it's the same every time. I don't see any accountability-
Ms. Osgood?
Sure.
Please vote "no" to the Noble Street expansion.
Thank you.
The schools are doing a lot of damage. Thank you.
What hospital are you from?
I'm speaking as a citizen today, not in behalf of my hospital.
You mentioned you were at a hospital, which hospital?
It's a psychiatric hospital on the north side.
Which, what's the name of the hospital?
I prefer not to say.
Okay.
If you would like, I would be happy to share it with you.
Please do, please do. Send it to us.
Yeah, I'll come and find you afterward.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Ms. Osgood, would you speak with the young lady at the back of the room? She'll meet you.
Thank you, Vice President Reese. Our next speaker then is Speaker 36, Raquel Macias, followed by Speaker number four, Erica Clark, and then Speaker number six, Jennifer Biggs, and Speaker 17, Jackson Potter, please.
Buenas tardes. Soy líder de Comunidades Unidas por la calidad de la educación y soy madre voluntaria de la escuela Hanson Park.
Good afternoon, I'm a leader with the Communities United for Quality Education and I'm a parent volunteer at Hanson Park Elementary.
Y vengo representando a los padres de Hanson Park. Estamos aquí porque estamos decepcionados de que ustedes, la mesa directiva, continúan mintiendo a los padres, y aún peor, siguen tomando decisiones que perjudican la educación de miles de estudiantes de las escuelas públicas que ustedes deberían representar. Es claro ustedes han tomado ya la decisión de aprobar las escuelas, charters, ya que las escuelas Noble ya ha comenzado la construcción de sus edificios antes de según ustedes aprobar esa escuela.
So we're here because we're concerned that the Board of Ed has already made decisions without taking in consideration, you know, the children that you're all supposed to represent. It's clear that you already made the decisions about the charter schools that you're going to be approving, as Noble Street has already started construction before, way before you, the Board, have approved them.
Ustedes han tomado el tiempo para invertir e investigar cuánto dinero de nuestros impuestos y del poco dinero que según ustedes tienen las CPS para abrir estas escuelas?
Have you all taken your time to investigate how much tax dollars will take to open this new, how many tax dollars that you say that CPS don't have to open these new schools? Have you looked at that?
Ms. Macias, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Hoy tenemos una recomendación para ustedes. Nuestra recomendación es rechacen las propuestas que no tienen un local asegurado. Rechacen las propuestas que no demuestren calidad de educación en los últimos cuatro años, no a las propuestas que tienen con excepciones políticas.
So we're here to give a recommendation to the Board. We recommend that you deny any proposals that don't have a secure, that have not secured location, deny any proposals that cannot demonstrate a proven track record over the last four years, and not to any proposals that have political connections.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number four, Erica Clark.
There, my name's Erica Clark, I'm with Parents for Teachers, and I'm a CPS parent myself. I hope you got the handouts I sent around. I really just have a few questions for you, not so much a statement, but at the last board meeting, one of you said that there's no connection between what happens at the charters and what happens to the neighborhood schools. I think you said the charters don't have any impact on neighborhood schools. But if you look at the two charts you have in front of you, you can see very clearly that there's a map of the schools that have been closed, schools that have been closed, charters, and schools that are currently underutilized, and they are the same map. There's a direct correlation, it's in blue and green and purple and green there. There's a direct correlation between the actions you're taking today and the impact it is going to destabilize and destroy neighborhood schools. So my question is, why did you not have this information before you, before you came here to vote today? I got that information from the CTU, I'm sure they'd be happy to share it with you. My second question is about overcrowding. You claim that we need to have these new charters in areas that are overcrowded, but you just approved $18 million to build an annex at Lincoln Park Elementary, a very overcrowded school in Lincoln Park, and another annex in Saginaw, at Wildwood School, another very overcrowded school. My question is, why is it that Lincoln Park gets an annex and the schools in Belmont-Craigans serving primarily Latino families get a charter? And I'll take your answers to these questions afterwards. My third question is about the budget. You keep claiming you're broke, you had to close 50 schools last year, you cut district school budgets by $160 million, and where is the money for these charter schools going to come from? And before you take a decision today, you need to tell parents and people in these schools, what are we going to see cut next year? Schools already are having toilet paper drives because they can't afford to buy basic supplies-
Ms. Clark?
Let alone-
Ms. Clark, excuse me.
Yes, let alone pay for music, art teachers, and math teachers. And I guess my final question is, and I kind of address this to everyone in the room because I'm really glad to see that the charter parents here like and love their schools, I mean, people in the neighborhood schools, we love our schools too. My question is, why is it that the rich and the powerful people in this city, like the mayor, like Bruce Rauner, like many of you here, don't make the choice?
Our next speaker, please.
The people who have the choice to send their kids to charter schools, don't make that choice.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number six, Jennifer Biggs.
Good afternoon. I'm a member of the McKinley Park NAC. We voted unanimously to recommend that you deny the Be the Change proposal. As a Board Member of Raise Your Hand, we reject all of the proposals. We face a $914 million deficit, enrollment declined by 3,000 students this year. We cannot afford this, and the demand for traditional schools is never discussed. Last year, there were 99,000 applications for magnet schools. CPS closed 50 district schools against community wishes. Clearly, true parent demand is not driving CPS decision-making. We already have choice, and the choice is there as we're decimating our neighborhood schools. Raise Your Hand just used CPS data from the 2013-14 school year compiled by Apples to Apples. We discovered that 47% of CPS charter and contract schools had student populations below the CPS threshold for ideal enrollment. This equates to 50 schools with nearly 11,000 seats empty. This proposed charter expansion risks destabilizing all of our schools, both existing district schools and existing charters. Parents should not feel that winning a lottery equates a high-quality education. Stop fostering this parent mindset of lottery is the only way to get a good education. Mr. Vitale, Raise Your Hand is more than happy to join hands with you and Ms. Lewis and go down to Springfield and work on that State Charter Commission whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Jackson Potter.
President Vitale, before I begin, I believe there was a procedural error on the early hearing this morning that affects your voting and your agenda. May I just tell you what that is so you can consider it? The CIWP hearing was scheduled at 9:00 a.m. There were two people who signed up to speak, we were not allowed to enter the board chambers to speak. There was some confusion and miscommunication downstairs, I'm not sure what it was, I think you can ask folks and they'll acknowledge that that occurred, so I don't know how that affects the state requirements for the hearing, may need to be rescheduled.
Thanks, Jackson, I'll ask James to look into it.
Okay. I'm here as a CPS graduate, a teacher, a CTU official, I was on the NAC this year. I want to thank you for not closing schools this year, I think it spared us a lot of heartache. I think what you're doing with the TIV funds is admirable, I think we absolutely need PE and art and music. I want to just talk about what the decision you have before you today. The whole conception of charters, like Vice President Ruiz mentioned, is for the experiments to be used to help existing schools, not undermine and supplant them. The charter movement and many district officials boast that parents have choice, but it's really a false choice. Our options are often hopelessly convoluted or complicated by marketing, false claims, a generation of school neglect, budget cuts, and cutthroat competition. But you have a choice today to provide a singular example of quality and effectiveness in neighborhood schools that all parents can count on. Last year, about this time, I warned you about the UNO charter network and the scandals that were starting to unfold. You decided to go ahead and put that new charter online despite the growing evidence of corruption and nepotism. Please don't make that same mistake today. I would operate on the preventative principle. One example of the irony you face today is if that you choose to vote in the concept charters that face a very likely possibility of an upcoming SEC investigation in the near future for kickbacks and nepotism, you will have proven the mantra that CPS is failing parents and that we need to dismantle the system, creating a self-fulfilling prophecy for expanding charters and to divest-
Mr. Potter, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure.
Thank you.
And divest from our existing schools. The choices the parents of Chicago and their children have in the future will be contingent on the choice you make for them today. Whether they have a robust neighborhood school or face more budget cuts, school closings, forced to choose between remaining schools in the area, is actually your choice, whether they're at a school with-
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
Anyway, please choose wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker then will be Speaker number seven, please, Martha Arroyo, followed by Speaker number 15, Philip Hall, and Speaker 35, Toise Mezel, please. Speaker number seven, please, Martha Arroyo.
I'm Speaker number 15. My name is Philip Hall. I stand before you as a member of the design team of Be the Change Charter School or Be the Change. We offer a real choice to Chicago. One of the exciting things about Be the Change is that it has been founded by a group of University of Chicago urban teacher education graduates who are all educators, who have come together with a veteran school leader who is with me now, and myself, a finance and operations director with ten years of successes in CPS contract and charter school operations. We have support from, at this point, more than 250 parents in the target communities who have joined their voices to the planning and proposal process of the school. Together, we want to form an independent site, a singular school focused on teaching students to be curious, resilient, and empathetic advocates. Be the Change is not just an empty slogan, it's about embodying and making change on many dimensions. For instance, changing the way teachers' teaching happens to reflect the way students learn. We don't learn in subject isolation, we learn by making connections. Be the Change embraces interdisciplinary blocks that break down the artificial barriers between content areas and help foster those connections that translate into long-lasting understanding and ability to transfer what you know to new contexts. Be the Change is about changing the way CPS looks. Right now, schools are highly segregated with students of predominantly one racial or ethnic group comprising the majority of the student body at any given school. Be the Change would actively recruit a diverse student population. Our focus neighborhoods allow us to capitalize on Chicago's diversity, Asian, Black, Latino, and white students. A typical Be the Change student will love coming to school. For the sake of time, I've cut my speech, but having been part of the Be the Change design team since last year, I'm compelled by their mission, their dedication, and respect for collaboration, partnership, and diversity. Be the Change has been tried and developed through a rigorous CPS design and application process. Along the way, we have met positivity and we have met adversity, and through it all-
Mr. Hall, excuse me, can you please conclude?
I will.
Thank you.
We have been responsive to our community in a way that honors our school design and reflects the requirements of the economic, cultural, and racial diverse communities of McKinley Park, Bridgeport, Pilsen, and the surrounding communities. I humbly submit, I'm disappointed by the recommendation, but I humbly submit for approval of the BCCS charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Last call for Speaker number seven, Martha Arroyo. Last call for Speaker 35, Toise Mezel. Moving on to Speaker number eight, please, Duane Trust, and Speaker 99, I'm sorry, number nine, Martin Perez, followed by Speaker number 16, Mike Rogers, and then Speaker number 20, Reverend Hatch, please.
No, I'm not going to blow a gasket. Are there any white operators and white supporters of charter schools who send their children to charter schools located in Black and poor communities? Thought not. Proposing new charter schools in poor Black and Brown communities is racial profiling on steroids. Mayor Emanuel is targeting the same communities where he closed schools. The mayor closed four neighborhood schools in Austin, which has no K-8 magnet school, yet CEP and Noble Street use your loopholes to target Austin and use political cronies like Alderman Mitz and Reverend Marshall Hatch to provide them political cover. Noble Street and CEP chose to propose charter schools, did not choose to propose charter schools for the children of Wildwood and Taft attending overcrowded schools. Like, for instance, Austin Polytech, their budget was cut by $500,000, they lost a counselor. Nash, which is now Level 2, had its budget cut by $150,000. Now they choose between tissue and a teacher. You're going to continue to hurt poor families when you continue to go ahead and take things, you know, open up charter schools in our community, which you devastated. I may not have the numbers of misinformed charter supporters, but I have the facts that charter schools benefit the non-Indigenous charter school operators off the backs of poor and Black and Brown children. And also, with the same group that's proposing the Chicago Education Partnership, this is a quote from their annual report, because now you're really talking about blurring the line between church and state. Fundamental to its success, 84% of our kids who haven't enrolled for a year have made a profession of faith in Jesus Christ. Their proposed principal has no experience when it comes to serving communities like mine. His experience as principal was at a Christian-based school in the suburbs, serving predominantly white students, yet you're telling me that this is a quality option for our schools, or we're the largest neighborhood in Chicago that has no K-8 magnet schools, but you devastated our community by closing, you know, four neighborhood schools, and you're saying that this Chicago Education Partnership is a quality, you know, option for our community? I thank you for your comments, Board Members, because-
Mr. Trust.
I got you. Now, how are you going to talk about devastating the community, and then you're going to turn around and open up four neighborhood schools? And lastly, this is the support that Noble Street got from South Mid to South Austin community for community support. They have none in Belmont-Craigans-
Thank you, Mr. Trust.
-which is the targeted community, but yet they're allowed to racially profile our communities.
Thank you, Mr. Trust, our next speaker.
And I thank you very much, and can you get us to the speaker right here real quick?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Martin Perez, last call for Martin Perez. Moving on to the next speaker then, please, Speaker number 16, Mr. Mike Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale and Board Members. My name is Michael Rogers, I'm the Executive Director of Chicago Education Partnership. Today, you have the opportunity to provide a life-changing option to children and families of the Austin neighborhood by approving our application for a charter school. We ask you to do so without conditions or contingencies. Our design team has spent 16 months preparing an exceptionally high-quality application with a strong curriculum that is Common Core-aligned, research-based, and has proven success in communities with students similar to the ones we desire to serve. We have a unique model, as Mr. Elsie mentioned, we were also part of the Breakthrough Schools Cohort sponsored by the Gates Foundation, New School of Chicago, and the Chicago Public Education Fund to design a school with next-generation learning principles. We do have school leadership experience, decades of teaching, departmental leadership, and school principal experience. We have a partnership with By the Hand Club, serves over 1,000 kids in four neighborhoods right now, including the last seven years in the Austin neighborhood. We have a tidal wave of community support, wide range of social service providers, nonprofit agencies, and a dozen pastors who have written letters of support, many from the Austin neighborhood. We have elected officials, Alderman Mitz, Alderman Irvin, and Congressman Davis. We have two school principals from the Austin community who have written letters of support. We have over 200 letters of intent to enroll for a school that won't open until 2015. We're bringing our own building and have demonstrated the financial wherewithal to raise the funds to build a new building in the Austin community. Our model resonates deeply with the members of the Austin community, and they are asking for this opportunity now.
Mr. Rogers, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
Every day that goes by is a missed opportunity to make a transformational impact on the life of the child. We ask, and the Austin community asks, that you approve the charter application of Chicago Education Partnership with no contingencies, no conditions, to help keep some of the 12,000 students that are leaving the Austin neighborhood to go to school elsewhere in the community. Thank you.
I just have a question. I have a question-
Excuse me.
-before you walk away. What is your concern about the contingencies? Have you seen them, or are you worried that there's something you can't meet? I mean, if we have concerns about your proposal, legitimate concern, why would you, and you believe you can achieve what you're going to achieve, why would you be so concerned about the contingencies?
Well, one of the primary issues is that we've really laid out an 18-month timeframe to try to plan a school and actually build a building. And it's my understanding, and I obviously wasn't made aware that any, the contingencies would exist, or even what the contingencies are, until a couple of hours ago. But then, once we would submit to answer the contingencies in the next RFP process, it's my understanding then that that wouldn't be ruled on until next fall, so we'd probably have less than a year to actually plan the school.
Okay.
Understand.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, Reverend Hatch.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President. I want to stand to support the CEP school in Austin as it is proposed. I want to say I am one who oppose the school closing, particularly the one in West Garfield Park, McConie, where my church is located. I live in Austin. But I stand to support this specific proposal of a unique school for the young people in Austin. Number one, it has ready wraparound services, as has already been said, with the highly successful By the Hand School Club after-school services. Secondly, it has a proven track record, the By the Hand Club and the academic partners of academic achievement, particularly for young people coming out of challenged communities. Secondly, the, thirdly, rather, the new construction that is being proposed is a significant economic development in Austin, and of course, will be a tremendous asset to the entire community. And then, number four, the emphasis on character development with the school itself and the wraparound after-school programs, something that is desperately needed in our community as we continue to talk about the reinforcement of positive values and positive culture. And then, lastly, I want to say that I support neighborhood schools and always have, but this specific proposal is needed on the west side of Chicago. As we look out in the west side quarter, we really do have some very significant and effective high school options for young people.
Reverend Hatch, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, Weston House is one, of course. Whitney Young, the First Lady's alma mater, is also one. I'm on the Board of Christ the King, we have young people that go to Providence St. Mel. What we really lack are high-quality elementary school options, and so this school fits a specific need. This is the right time, the right decision, and the right place for this school.
Thank you, Reverend Hatch. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 18, Alonso Saragosa, followed by Speaker number 19, James Stewart. Speaker 21, Mary Hughes. Mr. Saragosa, please.
Dear Board of Education Members, my name is Alonso Saragosa. I'm a lifelong Chicagoan resident of the Belmont-Craigans neighborhood. I'm on the LSE for Covent Park High School and Lloyd Grammar School, and I'm a member of the Northwest Side NAC. I'll try to be brief, even though I find it odd that NAC members spent more than nine weeks researching charter proposals, but we are given only two minutes to give you an in-person update on the process. I live very close to the proposed Noble site and have decided to talk to you about the NAC process problems that community residents experienced. I'm not sure if the Board members are aware of what went on in the Northwest Side NAC, or if the Office of New Schools stopped any of the issues from going up this far up, but I really do wish someone from the Board would care enough to perform an investigation on the Northwest Side NAC process before you vote on our two proposals. This is just a taste of what I experienced because of NAC staff. I was personally offered a job by the facilitator and told after a meeting that charter is the only way to go and won't be stopped. Had attendance and voting rules changed on us on a weekly basis to discourage certain NAC members from attending. Witnessed a husband-and-wife pro-charter couple allowed to vote from the same home. Forced to sign a confidentiality agreement and order not to speak to the media while other NACs were free to do so. Told that we couldn't have the community meeting at Proster, even though it had free parking and plenty more space there for community residents. Failed to have a translator at the most important meeting with the intrinsic and Noble boards, even though we had at least five Spanish-speaking mothers on the NAC. Not finding out until the sixth week that the attendance boundary for the Noble campus was set for the Austin community, even though we were told there was a Northwest Side in Belmont-Craigans NAC, and we had zero African-Americans on the NAC anyways. Was intimidated and harassed by a high-ranking CPS official named Teresa Ford Bay, who used her position and name-dropped the Office of the CEO to try and get me to shut up and just vote. The name of the CPS employee in the transcript of the mobster-like conversations she had with me and others, and others who are present, is in the document I handed to you if you'd like to read it.
Mr. Saragosa, excuse me, can you please conclude?
This process could not have been more misleading and disappointing to the NAC members and to my community. The fact that Noble has already almost finished demolishing the structures at the new site without being approved for it makes me think that the proposal was a foregone conclusion, and that we spent months working on a waste of time.
Thank you.
I urge you not to only, to not only look into each of the NAC problems that I've cited above, but also to put a pause on our two proposals and to truly find out what our community desires by conducting a multilingual door-to-door census in the area.
Thank you, Mr. Saragosa.
Can I get 30 seconds, please? A community meeting a mile north of the pro-site with expensive street parking during winter is not a good indicator of community support or opposition, although any intelligent taxpayer should be wary. I trusted the Board as the best intention when it comes to our children and our tax dollars, and I would hope that you could get more involved in a process like this one that is supposed to engage residents and not let your own staff break us down as they attempted to do.
Thank you, Mr. Saragosa. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 19, James Stewart.
Good afternoon, my name is James Stewart, I'm 2012-
I'm 2012 retired from the Chicago Board of Education. I have a request to the Board of Education. You are charged with effectively educating all the children of all of the people, and adequate funding has not been equalized in all of the neighborhoods in the Chicago area. Further than that, as opposed to public schools and also charter schools, you must remember that in most public schools, the graduates are from teacher education colleges. Most of, well, I wouldn't say most of, a large plurality of the persons who work in the charter and maybe some of the Catholic schools are not graduates of teacher education programs. So what you're really saying is that a person who is really an expert in education is being replaced by a person who is not an expert. That's almost like saying that I would send someone into surgery who is not a medical person. Further than that, many of the persons in the charter schools are non-education majors, so they really wouldn't know the history and philosophy of education. They wouldn't know, they would not have had methods of teaching students. They would not even know different learning styles. They would not even know, in other words, if a kid came to them and said, whatever, they would have a problem. And my last point, I'm having a problem with this. You know that you were supposed to do adequate funding for all the schools. That has not been done. So I don't know why we're sitting here taking this position when certain neighborhoods have not even been addressed socially, academically, and even culturally.
Mr. Stewart, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes, I'm going to conclude.
Thank you.
So how can you expect for the public schools in certain neighborhoods to be adequately prepared when you have not funded those things? I would say table...
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Table these proposals today.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Our next speaker, please. Mary Hughes, followed by Speaker number twenty-three, Salim Yukan, followed by Speaker fifty-six, Husnny Silencia, and fifty-seven, Richard Townsell, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mary Hughes, and I'm the parent of three children who attend Cassell Elementary in the Mount Greenwood neighborhood. I'm also an advocate for children with special needs, and I'm here with Cassell's principal, Denise Esposito, to thank each and every one of you for approving the construction of an eight-classroom modular addition at Cassell to be built this summer. This addition means the world to our little school. It means we'll have adequate classroom space for our general education students, and, most importantly, with the promise of opening a new intermediate, low-incidence cluster program, it means that our children in our primary autism classroom will be able to, like their typically functioning peers, remain at Cassell through eighth grade. Cassell is a Level One neighborhood magnet fine arts school. I encourage you to continue to invest in our neighborhood schools through construction to address overcrowding, and expanding the engaging magnet programs in our neighborhood schools can make a huge difference for people who are waiting for that kind of choice. Thank you again for investing in our neighborhood schools by giving us this addition. It will make a huge difference for the three-hundred-and-sixty children who attend Cassell. If you'll allow me, let, can Principal...
This principal did not register to speak, Mr. President.
No, really. We really appreciate your thanks, but to be honest with you, it's been a long day.
Thank you very much.
It's going to be much longer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker then is Speaker number twenty-three, please.